That's all right.
It's an old message, I think, from.
That's what I guessed. You're looking at something from February where we had to delay today.
Yes, yes, and I just didn't, I actually did the homework and all, I just didn't pick it up somehow, so.
Did you pen all thought out?
Yes, I'm ready to go. Go ahead.
All right.
Apologize to all you folks there.
And we'll call ourselves the order here at thirteen minutes before seven o'clock. And as we already announced, but we'll do it again, the planning board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded, and they can be broadcast at another date on our Hubbardston channel, what is it, one ninety-two or something? I don't know, I don't have a TV, but it's on, it's on one of those channels. And so we're gonna call the order, our regular planning board meeting, coming attractions, we have another meeting next week that we are going to devote solely to street or road. But tonight, you'll see street or road on the agenda. That's not to preempt or eliminate the other meeting. The other meeting was called with quite elaborate notice so that we'd fully inform the public of that happening, and it will happen. Tonight is Sharon Begley requested to be on the agenda, and of course, we took that under advisement and put her on the agenda at her request. Next week's meeting will, we invited specific, we didn't have to, but we set it up as if it was a public hearing kind of a thing, where we informed the butters, and so we wanted to make sure we included everybody. Tonight, I think, we'll probably have a smaller scope of the same topic. I don't wanna, I don't wanna make tonight next week's meeting, that's my point. So we'll call, we're called to order, we've got an old business list here that's pretty extensive, and we'll try to zip through it, and we'll start with a guest named Troy Gunther, if I'm.
Close, Gunther.
Gunther?
Yep, that's pretty good.
Troy, you wanna come up to the table? You've been here before, and the issue is the ninety-five Williamsville Road plot that had a fair amount of work done on it without the proper permits in place prior to the work. And we've requested from you, among other things, a engineering plan of what would, what the plan would be to, I think we're calling it a restoration, restore it back to the way it was. It's governed by both a scenic road law and a secondary law, a state law. So, take it, Troy.
So, let's make up for everybody.
Should we read through it?
We're gonna do it together.
Thank you.
Hello. There you go. So as you mentioned, yeah, I was here, I think it was a month ago, on behalf of everyone. And I was asked to come here, and I didn't really know exactly what things were gonna entail. So after that meeting, and, you know, I went back and looked at the project and what's actually happened. I've also reviewed the videos from the past meetings, and they kinda got to me. I think this whole project, this, this whole thing has been grossly misrepresented by the neighbor. I wanna read through these notes together, if you don't mind.
Sure.
First off, May of eighteen, I got an email from Brett Chapman saying that he bought ninety-five Williamson, Williams Road. I attached that email, and then with his permission, he said, "I own ninety-five and ninety-three." Ninety-three is kinda technically, by the way, it's parcel thirty-one A and thirty-one B, it's all under ninety-five. He owns both properties. So ninety-five and ninety-three are both owned by Brett, Brett Chapman.
In its entirety, or are there, are there other owners as well?
They own the property, and I brought the deeds. That's all, I have that as well. So I know there was talk about border walls, but that, that doesn't exist between ninety-five and ninety-three since he owns that. This is a, you know, great expense to me, and I've, I've got some trucking costs and some things here. So for the majority of the work that was done between that, on his request and what I did, I don't contest the fact that we took some stones at the end on your scenic wall, on the front. There's no contest there, and I got a plan here, and I wish we didn't touch it, 'cause it was extremely minor, and that's why we're here. But there's no contest there. There's a, there's a wall parallel with Williamsville Road, we've got photos before and after, and I got a drawing and plans and no problem coming back to fix that. That's, I wanna make sure that's clear, and that's not a big deal. It's, it's labor and, and materials, and not something I wanna come back for, but not a problem at all. As well as some walls on the other side, which I think everyone references is the ninety-one side, that's kinda, I think, the uphill side of that.
Towards town.
Towards town.
East.
I guess, yep, on the uphill side. Where again, there's another solar farm, which is kinda confusing, 'cause remember, I was asked from the beginning to come and take some stone on his property, which was next to the solar field. Well, there's solar farms on both sides. So some stone was taken on the ninety-one side, the uphill town side, that I believe are in some wetland areas that raised some flags as well. And less work was done over there, most notably, when we got in there, one of the trucks got stuck on the way out. So we quickly kinda stopped doing work over there. That was, that was quite the headache. It's too far away, it's too, it's too far in the woods, it's, it wasn't worth it. And I got the plans here of all the stuff. So then, fast forward, we got to the meeting, the last request. I was here for the last meeting, and we briefly discussed this. So I wanna make sure this, this information was put in the hands, 'cause I think, again, some of the information is grossly misconstrued. If you guys wanna go to the next page.
Before we do.
Sure.
I'm on the third bullet. "In January two thousand nineteen, the owner asked me to attend the planning board committee's meeting to address concerns about the stones taken from the scenic road wall. In good faith, I attended the meeting and offered to help put this, back the stones that were taken from that wall." That's the scenic road wall?
Correct.
And that's what you're saying, there's no argument about it?
There's no, there's no argument. And I think, and I brought the same photos.
All right.
Everything's in the packet. Everything is in order of these bullet points. So it's, behind this letter is your email from Brett, asking me to come and take the stones, so he owned, he just bought the land, he owns the one next to it. Come in before the tree guys come, basically. 'Cause he does have the hopes of just, you know, smoothing the land out again, grass, and putting more solar panels up.
He's not gonna put solar panels up against the road.
Of course not, but in, in that, in that property where we're working, behind that house.
Are you saying that your proposed restoration or reconstruction is to smooth out the land and put in grass?
Absolutely not, no, that's what his plan is.
Oh, all right.
'Cause that's what he thought of me, so before all this stone product got buried in his process, you know, let us come and grab some and actually use it before it just gets buried. That's what started this whole thing. I've never, I was never out to the property, I honestly, I've lived in Acton for most of my life, and I, it was the first time I heard of Hubbardston. So I was, you know, he told me where it was, and I came out, and it's about an hour away.
Most of us have heard of Acton.
Yep. I've had a lot of fun in town. So, pretty much, I just wanted to be clear on kinda what are the facts? 'Cause I feel like in the past couple of meetings, it seems like this is morphed into some massive project, and I wanna, and I also know there was questions about the border wall. Brett owns both properties, and we were allowed to be back there and clean it up, the ninety-five and the ninety-three. So I mean, the majority of this meeting is about that front scenic wall, and I brought the plan. And I don't wanna schedule a date to come back and fix that. Let's see, orienters. This is just a blow up of this. I think everybody has. Williamsville Road, this is ninety-five. The new acquired, this is the land that Brett owns, so this is all of ninety-five. It's broken up into, it's, the way the deed is, it's A and B. This is all of ninety-five, Williamsville, and this is all ninety-three, which Brett owns, and there's a current field, there's a current solar farm here, and there's a current solar farm here. So he bought this land in the middle, asked us to come and take some of the stonework on this property, which we did. Your scenic wall, that we got photos of up here, we took some of the top stones off of this one here. And again, this is, you know, I had a plan drawn of, and you can see on the photos, this is what we need to do. This is the existing scenic wall, we took some of the top stones there, and we proposed to put those back, and make sure it's a nice, matching scenic wall that, I mean, the, the only thing we can do is, again, we have the street view of two thousand eleven, was the only recent photos that we had, and you can see the, I mean, if you really look carefully, you can tell, at least by my eye, you know, that this, the current wall is missing a few of these top stones. And that's what we proposed on making sure it's, it's cleaned up. We roughly estimated it seventy-five linear feet long. If you look at the, there's two befores, shows that the scenic wall starts at his driveway, roughly five feet off, goes for little ways, and then there's lawn for the rest of that property. If you put these two together, the two befores. Minute after. Seems to read, was what we tried to. So that's the scenic wall, and that's why I wanna make sure we know we took some from and plan on repairing. The following other photos were from when we were walking around Brett's job site, or his backyard, of what we looked at, and that was on six seventeen eighteen. So some of the stone piles there, that were on ninety-five that we took. So when I heard numbers that the walls were three feet high, six feet wide, I'm gonna argue with that.
All right. Let's make life easy. You've got five photographs here. Can we just label them one, two, three, four, five, from the top?
Sure. So the top, the way they were in the package, number one is a before. Number two is a before.
These are, by before, you mean August two thousand eleven?
The August two thousand eleven photos are scenic wall befores. Number three, number three, the one seventeen nineteen, I'll mark mine too, so we're all on the same page. So the, the one seventeen nineteen is the scenic wall after, or at current state.
Yeah, it's kinda today.
Yep, today.
Full enough for today.
Yep, yeah, nothing's changed, unless you guys plowed, it's not over it.
We did.
And then four and five were the only two photos we found from when we walked around on ninety-five, before we decided if we were gonna come in, 'cause he told me to come out and look at it. And these are just random photos in the middle of the woods that we looked at to decide, is it, is it worth for us to drive out and pull some of these stones back to our yard? And those are to kinda give you a reference of.
Can you show us where on the map this would be?
These, we're looking at ninety-five, ninety-three. These are so roughly, you know.
You'd be standing there to take these.
Let's say here, I'm gonna this way. On his property.
All right, let's.
I would, as I guessed, 'cause I, based on the sun.
So you're saying he owns ninety-three, ninety-four, and ninety-five?
Uh, ninety-five. Ninety-three and ninety-five, there's no ninety-four, the, it's, it's somewhat confusing, it took me a while. Ninety-five is split up into two, and ninety-three doesn't even exist, it's, it's, in your deeds is some thirty-one A. It took me a little while to figure it out, but that's listed as purchased and sold.
I think something's screwed up here.
Okay.
Who did the plan?
Oh, just, that's a landscape architect friend of ours. Did a scenic wall plan off that photo.
One of the things we asked to do was to get an engineered plan. I think that was in our letter, wasn't it?
This is an engineered plan. By VHB.
By what?
By VHB. This is the engineered plan that Brett bought for the property. It has the layouts, it has the scenic wall, it has the offsets of the neighboring wall, it has the existing house, it has the solar farms, it has all the proposed projects. There's nineteen layers of on this, that's, I don't know what else I could get.
Normally, our numbers run one, two, three, four, five. I think you've got them mixed up.
Okay.
Can you go to the town website? AccessGIS. I don't hang over your soul, you know what you're.
You might be looking for this, that's, that's the GIS, there's your thirty-one A, there's thirty-one. So that's ninety-five, and this is supposedly ninety-three.
Is this two lots?
Ninety-five was broken up into lot A and B, that's how it's on the register of deeds.
I don't, I don't remember that at all, we didn't see an A and I.
Well, it may have been two lots on a deed from way back when.
That's true.
Yeah, and I'm not, this part I don't know.
Could be easy enough to look up a copy of the deed.
Oh, you said you had all the deeds?
We got, here's the, here's the deed for, it was fielding to Williamsville Road Solar, this is the deed for ninety-five.
It's got two lots in it?
And then this is the deed for.
Containing twenty-five acres and being shown on a plan entitled compiled plan of land to be conveyed. Seventy-four, is this that plan? Plan book four oh two, plan twelve, no.
Yes, here, when we, let me go back a second.
Four oh six.
Here it is.
This is plan book four oh six fifty-eight.
Okay, so that's not the one referred to in the deed.
He doesn't have the number, it's never been signed.
Here's.
And then here's the deed for thirty-one.
Right, and then there's ninety, this is ninety-five.
Right.
Ninety-five, this one hasn't, doesn't have a, because it's, it's got a house in it.
But it does have a solar.
Yeah.
Right, can you, Todd? One of the, I could borrow from another project we had here tonight. One of the reasons we asked for an engineering plan, is that when they come in, they come in and they just, they define the street adjust and the book and the plan and who owns it.
Okay.
And, and it's signed by a registered professional engineer.
Okay.
And it keeps us from scratching our heads. It's really a very professionally prepared plan, and in most cases, it answers all the questions rather than asks questions. It answers them. I don't have a record of two lots. But I'm not sure it really matters. What we'd like is our letter responded to, an engineering plan and a restoration plan, among other things, and you have the letter. It usually, when you read a letter like that, you say, "Oh, I gotta do a lot of work." Well, it really actually saves a lot of work. Because now, I think, we're gonna reject this plan, 'cause it doesn't agree with the assessor's maps, and it doesn't carry an engineer stamp, and you're gonna be all mad at us, but it doesn't seem like this is what we asked for. There are two situations. The wall in the front, scenic road, and the wall that borders ninety-one in terms of walls, and then there's working in the wetland, which we said would ship over to the CONCON for have them deal with it. Can we make sense out of this, or am I pulling a trigger I don't need to pull?
This, this is the course by the road, which is two hundred and seventy-seven feet. So this would be this, probably this two hundred and seventy-seven feet. Unfortunately, all the, all the runs here are by stone walls, so.
Well, that's the way they're described.
Yeah, no, that's the way they're described, but three hundred and eighty-two, okay, there's a three hundred and eighty-two square, I can back up. Three hundred and eighty-two, one hundred and fourteen, two forty-four. One thousand two hundred and fifty-two on the back.
All right, but if it is describing that, it's not describing that. There's, there's no description there for lot A.
My CAD guy put that on there today, just to.
Well, it doesn't matter, I'm, I'm going by the deed, not by what you.
I don't know, when this line doesn't make, this line doesn't make sense.
It doesn't exist.
Because this, he has a mark there, which I think.
'Cause this is your two seventy-seven.
Two seventy-seven, but does it start, he, it starts here and it goes here, to this point. And that's the beginning, point of beginning, it says.
Is the guy that did the plan a registered professional engineer?
Uh, I, it came from VH, I'm sure it came from a professional land surveyor, yes, has to be, I don't know how else you could produce it.
Well, could I ask a question, Alice?
Yeah, this is this lot.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure, because it.
Just, you mean lot A or lot A, B combo?
Well, I don't know why this is not, when they ran the instruments, this doesn't quite go to this point here, it looks like, maybe. But they found the bound, so this is this course, the two hundred and seventy, and that's the point of the beginning.
Right, if it jumps across that, that line.
You have seven hundred and.
Then that line doesn't exist yet, in terms of the deed.
I guess I see your point of, I see your request, I get that.
Well, it's the same request, it's not a new request.
It's not a new request, I just came out here, guys, because what I heard on the last videotapes of what has been going on here is absolutely incorrect. So I came out here in goodwill to try to fix this. I'm gonna be the one fixing that old scenic wall in the front. You guys asked for a twenty-four hundred dollar retainer on an engineer to babysit some of the stuff. I gave it to you.
We haven't triggered that.
I know that, I'm just saying. The work that needs to be required, and I agree that if this isn't a stamped drawing in front of you, fine, I'll, I'll go back and get that. But there was questions about border properties, and this is, this is what, this is what's confusing to us as well, but it's not anymore. Brett owns both properties, this is listed as lot unit thirty-one, that's your GIS thirty-one, that's why it's ninety-three. These streets don't make, it makes no sense to me, because you got ninety-three down there, you got ninety-five in the middle, and then ninety-one up here. So it, it makes no common sense that.
Who owns this?
That's another solar farm.
That's right. The gentleman that you were either employed by or worked with doesn't own this.
I agree, I agree.
So.
So then, this is the border wall in question.
That's right.
Has, that is somewhere near some wetlands. And I guess, or some, somewhere up in here, correct. So I wanted to focus on fixing the scenic wall, and this might be moved over to CONCON, because you guys are responsible for making sure this scenic wall gets fixed. And that's why I'm here tonight, 'cause I wanna fix that, and I wanna set a time to do that.
That's a good idea.
And I don't wanna put a whole lot of road rocks in front. This wall, the kickback, it doesn't even start till almost fifty feet back. I think that's outside of scenic road. So I'd be happy to talk with conservation, 'cause it seems like this solar farm might have caused some problems. And I feel like we didn't know any of that, and we came in and maybe even got slapped because there's future issues or past issues here. But I'm not, I'm not sure of that, but if this is a conservation committee issue, then we'll have this line surveyed, wetlands flagged, I guess, and, and any repairs to this area, it's not, it, it all follows, it's a very similar wall, and these photos kinda show it.
You can see it.
You can see it.
Right here.
Here's the process we were trying.
But this border is still a border wall between two different owners, that's the issue.
And I agree, I wanna clear, I wanna clear the smoke on, on the ninety-three and ninety-five, and shift our focus on the scenic wall and this.
Do you have the letters, the original, all this with?
I read the letter on the way here. I thought I brought what you needed, I have the application for the repairs, I have the drawing by a landscape architect of the scenic road repairs, and I thought I brought an engineered plan.
Can you tell us where the, is this the wall that the butter was objecting to you're taking, or where you took stones from over here too?
He complained, well, as he was trespassing on this whole property, he was complaining about both sides. And that stirred up the original conversation, and then you guys.
What are both sides, can you point to them?
Yeah, this side and this side.
So there's rocks here too?
Yeah, there's piles all, there's piles all over this whole ninety-five. But the fact that he owns ninety-three and ninety-five, and he owns this land, that all doesn't matter. It's, it's the area around the wetlands and your scenic road, and your scenic road, and that's what I'm here for tonight.
You have the key to this lot too with you?
Yeah, it's right here. That's the, it says thirty-one on top, because that's what GIS is listed as.
I guess I'm. This is an old deed, this isn't the current deed, right?
That's the, that's the current deed for ninety-five, and that's the current deed for ninety, supposedly ninety-three.
Booking page is fifty-eight eight ninety-five, and that.
That's not this one.
That's not.
No, this.
Oh, fifty-eight, right there, booking page on the top.
You got fifty-eight eight nineteen is for the ninety-five.
Okay.
And that's what.
Oh, wait, what's it saying? What are you reading? Property card?
The property card, so he's saying, this is fifty-eight eight nineteen, page two twenty-four, and that's, that does describe this parcel, except I can't verify the back courses.
By this parcel.
This, this one.
Yeah, but when you lay your hand down with that, you're on lots A and B. There's one parcel here. And this drawing shows something A and B.
It does.
I don't know that there's any record of A and B besides this piece of paper.
Let's see if, let me read this again, see if there's a reference. Because I was just going by the two twenty-seven.
You know what we're doing.
We're doing what?
We're doing what we would normally have Bill Murray.
Right.
Because we would like to have taken this plan and your application and whatnot, and handed it to our engineer.
Okay.
And say, "Get to work, Bill," and he would go down and look it over, and what he'd be looking for would be the plan with who owns what.
Mm-hmm.
The drawing of the restoration plan.
Okay, you have it. I just, it's one piece of paper, I gave it to you.
Yeah, but you have to say from where to where.
Where is that?
This, this one?
We do, it's, it's listed. Here's your plan of reconstruct scenic wall to original state, there's your seventy-five feet of wall that's listed. Here's your plan of how we're gonna do it. Here's the application that you requested, and the two deeds that go with this plan. Now, if I need to send a different plan to Bill Murray, I'm happy to. I thought I followed everything on the letter. That's a smaller version of this.
All right, let's, let's see if we can't save this guy more hassle. And get to Bill Murray with. And get to Bill Murray with this information. I only caution that he may say something to us and we start another month's cycle.
That, and that's fine, and there's, neither do I, I mean, I got a pregnant wife and a two-year-old, I'm missing dinner and family time. But I, I came out here, I know I didn't have an announcement to be here until last minute, but I wanna get this information in front of you and get the ball rolling.
All right.
On my good, on my goodwill.
We will roll the ball forward with this plan, if it's okay, if you, if Alice is. I, I read our letter, and in fairness to this gentleman, we didn't say professionally stamped professional engineering drawings. We said prepared by a professional engineer, which is a little looser language than
True.
than I'm saying tonight, so we'll give him the benefit of the doubt.
Thank you.
What is the length of this wall?
Yeah, we, we don't see what you're gonna do over here. We don't, we don't hear a plan for that.
I don't have, I, I don't have the length of that. I don't know, this wall started and stopped, and again, there's stuff inside here, and I, I don't have the records of that. We never thought it was gonna go that route, so I, I don't have any of that, all I have is a couple before photos.
Are these the only new photos you have, or do you have a whole camera full of them, and we're only looking at two?
No, we literally have, I searched, I mean, I searched through phones, I, this is actually one of those phones, one of these is for me and one is for my foreman. We were walking through the woods.
Is this, though, where you, as far as the wall goes, or just the part that you think you're responsible for, or?
This, no, this.
It's on dimension, so he's just.
I think, no, I agree, this might go a little longer, this was literally, um, some stuff shaded into draw attention.
Cause if you look at this, this is the hole, where's your first plan? Wait a minute, your first page, you can see exactly where this is, actually. Yeah, here. If you look at one, you can see the hole with the, see the tree with the hole in it? So this is the corner, so this is this wall, correct?
Correct, yeah, these two we kinda read together, there's this one, and the other photo have the grass.
So is there a driveway that goes in here, leading up to the house?
Yeah, there's a driveway right here.
Okay, so, all right, so, okay, that makes sense, so if this is this wall, and then you show there's a gap here, and this shows there a gap here.
Yeah.
And, and then this is the same, this is the new one taken. You can still see, this is the remnant of that wall.
It's all still there.
Yeah, let's, let's do something. While we're not completely satisfied, let's, let's give the gentleman a passing grade, and we'll pass it to Bill Murray, who will do the thing that he should do, site inspection and a plan review. He will, at our request, take it upon himself to also look at this area.
Mm-hmm.
And try to determine what he thought was there, and what he thinks needs to be there in a way of restoration. Because while you're correct, this is the scenic road law.
Mm-hmm.
We also said last time that we would be looking for something to be done in this area as well, because this is covered by a state law.
Correct. And as, as Alice sees there, it's very obvious where the remnants of walls were, just, I mean, we did to this, very similar to what we did to that. And you can obviously tell.
This has been taken down.
We, we hadn't moved it, that's for sure, but it's definitely been touched.
Yeah, it's had maybe half of the stones on it removed.
Yeah, uh, sure. So, long story short, I, I thank, that's fine, if you wanna pass that along. And like I said, we found out after the fact that some of this was in the wetlands area. So if we wanna restore the wall to what's drawn on that, on your, your hand there, on that top page, like this, to what, you know, they were, we'll get that done, and that's why I wanna come here tonight.
All right, we're, we're not gonna make that determination tonight.
No, but this one here.
We, we are going to give it to our engineer, and we're gonna stop playing engineer and lawyer, we're gonna fill these up, and.
I know you got a lot of things to do tonight, so, so thank you.
And, and, did it to Bill with our instructions will be something like, oh, and by the way, can you get us all this done electronically?
Uh, yes, I will, uh, email, okay, yes.
If you give it to our, to Christina.
I was gonna ask you anyway, I'll, I'll email it tomorrow, and then I assume Bill will get back to you guys, and then you'll email me.
Yes, yeah, I know, we have a building, there's a lot of snow on the ground, so it's hard to see where the rocks are.
Yeah, and there's, and there's no way we're gonna do any of this work any, I just wanted to get this in front of you sooner than later.
Okay.
And, uh, thank you, and the instructions to Bill will be to take this plan and see if it meets the needs of what we're calling a restoration plan. And as soon as the snow disappears, we go out there and, and take a look at reality.
You have this page in your package?
No, the, the deed's on.
I think the only, I only made one copy of deeds, so you have them, there should be two.
Well, we can get the deeds easy enough, right street.
If you see this, see, this doesn't include the whole back of this parcel on that.
Well.
But you don't need it.
Unless that enters into the rock discussion, I don't mind that that's missing.
Shave this off so you can see it, okay, okay. Uh, thank you for the time.
Any kind of vote to refer it?
Um, if we should vote, yeah, we can vote, this is the, the little plan we just put forth was to move this package to Bill Murray for his tabletop review, and when this, and comment back to us, and when the snow belts, his boots on the ground review. And I get a motion of that effect, and then we'll vote on it and move it.
Uh, okay, I'll move that we refer to Bill Murray, the plans presented to us tonight by, what's the gentleman's name?
Troy Gunther. Troy, uh, Gunther, I believe.
Troy Gunther. Regarding the property at ninety-five, ninety-three and ninety-one, Williamsville Road, to determine whether his plan of reconstruction is adequate.
Second. And I, I believe Bill should give us an opinion, or include in his report, the opinion regarding working in the wetlands and what we should do with that issue.
Okay, amend the motion accordingly.
So it's rocks, rocks, and.
Is there a vote? All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
You were reaching for this.
Yes, I was. Sorry.
Ninety-one Williamsville Road, another solar project right next door here. We haven't heard from those folks, again, we're looking for a check from them, so we can initiate work with Bill Murray to do what we'll call a compliance assessment. We have on our table a complaint from a neighbor, and we have sent them emails and letters to no response, they've made no response to us. And I sent them, you, you sent them one, and then I sent them a follow-up. And I think what's happening is we're dealing with the wrong guy. He's the O and M guy that takes care of the facility. What we really wanna do is reach into the owner. So I asked the O and M guy to tell me the owner's names, thinking that he would be, he would give me the best guy to talk to. If he doesn't, we can get the owner off the assessor's records and talk to somebody, might not be the best person, but we'll talk to somebody who owns the thing. And get this moving. Again, probably not gonna do any work while there's snow on the ground, but if we can address it and get it all resolved, that when the spring comes, they can act if they have to act, it would be better. So that's the status of that, anybody got any comments or discussion, or?
No, Mr. Chairman, could we presume upon the board and possibly move up street or road?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking to just do a couple more, and then we'll jump down all those bullets.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome. Gravel pit report, that's usually Bill Homans, he's not here tonight, but he gave me a call saying he wasn't gonna be able to make it tonight. But he also mentioned to me that we need to write a letter to Mr. Cattisto, who appears to be poised to initiate work on a gravel pit restoration, which we applaud. However, he hasn't come before us and told us what he's gonna do. He should submit a plan, a little restoration plan. Again, we're not trying to puff it up to a big hundred thousand dollar engineering project, but we need to know what he's gonna do. We need to permit that, and then let him proceed.
Where's that pit located?
That pit is down Route sixty-eight towards Worcester, just before the bridge, uh, right down at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah.
There's a big driveway and a house close to the road.
Oh, behind it.
And you'd ruin that driveway all the way in, and there's a, a pretty good sized pit that they removed gravel and bentonite clay from, and then stopped, did some restoration, but now should finish the restoration.
That's funny, I just, they were unloading the excavator up there.
That's what triggered it, I believe our highway department was alert to that and, and have interacted with them. Is that right?
Is it on the bridge side of the road?
Well, the bridge is the bridge.
The bridge that goes over sixty-eight?
It's on, not on the pond side, it's on the, on the stream side.
Okay, all right.
You're going down on the right.
Yeah, the west, west side of Route sixty-eight, right at the bottom of the hill.
Okay.
The Cattisto family owns it, there's it was an active pit, stopped, I believe they did some restoration, and now they have to finish that restoration. They've been here three or four times, but they just didn't come back with the final story. Scenic Road Report, Craig. We've kinda thrashed on that one tonight. Noise Report, we're gonna jump over. Master Plan, I understand we've been bugging contributors, is that true? We've been bugging master plan contributors?
The letters went out.
People that might contribute to the master plan?
No, the form was never sent out, it was never voted on by the board. I brought a copy of it tonight.
All right, let's put that on the table, and we'll take that up when we're done with some other business. Do we have to do grant work tonight?
Uh, no, just to say that they've been submitted.
Okay. And, um, anybody see any hot item they wanna do right now, or can we jump over some of these? We'll jump over approval minutes, we'll jump over correspondence, and we come to Sharon Begley, Street or Road Information. So, welcome, come on up. You requested, and we granted the request, it should be on the, on the agenda tonight to talk about this.
Um, I presented you with a copy of my title search. I don't know if anyone had the opportunity to read it.
I did read it.
Okay.
I read.
Thank you. So the title search shows that we own up to the traveled way. This was recognized by town council back in two thousand thirteen, when I presented it to, um, Anita Schweppes, is that correct?
If you hadn't said that, I wouldn't have had it.
Okay. So, um, town council recognized this, okay, and she sent a letter dated December twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, to all the residents of Street, Street or Road that lived back in two thousand thirteen, that the ZOK two thousand and three plan was incorrect, and to not, to not use it. So they were all aware, whoever looked up there were aware that this two thousand and three plan that the town, I do not know why the town hired ZOK to enter into our private property to lay out a new road line. And my lawyer, Limwood Erskine, back in two thousand and three, sent a letter to the town asking why they hired ZOK to do that. And even till today, this day, I've never got a response why ZOK did it, okay? This new plan that he has presented is the same as the two thousand and three plan, okay? He's, he's got a new, the new, the two thousand and three road, road line plan on, on there. Okay, here's his two thousand and three, he's got the little this is the one he did for the town. Okay, here's the one that was done. Oh, let's see. And it's unregistered, Street or Road layout plan, prepared by ZOK survey dated November thirtieth, uh, two thousand and eighteen. Okay, it's not correct along our property line, I don't know about the rest of the neighbors, the road, we don't care, we're just concerned with our property line. Okay, um, he's got, let's see. And I can't even read it.
You're saying this one's the correct one or the incorrect one?
That's the incorrect one, but it's the same as the new one. Edge of traveled way is the dash line, um, on the, this new layout plan that is proposed to put on the town line. Okay, and here is our property line. According to our title search, this, on his new plan, we owned up to the traveled way. Thus, we own up to the middle of the way, according to Massachusetts, um, general law. So, okay.
Subject, your, your.
The only thing that's difference is the bearings, because magnetic north has changed.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna have to just do a little timeout tonight. You're certainly welcome to present whatever you wanna present. But you have to understand your, the party you're speaking to. The planning board cannot, um, what's the right word? Resolve or adjudicate or intervene in disputes of deeds and things. We don't do that for a living.
Right, but the town council has agreed that we own up to the traveled way.
That's a declaration, that's, that's fine, we, we have ears, we're gonna listen.
Saying that's a declaration, okay.
But in terms of our authority, we can't resolve a deed conflicts. That's just not what planning boards do. My understanding is the select board took a set of plans, and the next procedural step in that is that it comes to the planning board, and the planning board does something with those plans. And what we did last year with those plans was, um, looked at them and said, if this road ever come, if this, I hate to even call it a road, if this
Travelway.
strip of dirt, strip of earth.
Right away.
Oh, the travelway.
It, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, that's what they call it.
Becomes a road. What the planning board did last year was it said, if it becomes something more than a strip of dirt, it need not comply with the, um, zoning.
Subdivision.
Subdivision road standards, which is something we do have authority to do. We can waive them, and we've waived them on other roads in town. That is really the limit of our authority. It's a, it's a, hmm, do they have to meet the standards, or don't they have to meet the standards? And that, that would be something that we can act on. If we don't do anything, then the default position is the plan goes back to the select board. If we don't do anything, then the default position is the plan goes back to the select board without comment, and they can do with it as they wish, they can get it on the warrant, or they can have the town vote on it, or whatever. So, we're happy to provide a forum for citizens, as yourself and anybody else that wants to talk to this issue. And we're happy to listen, but you have to understand the limits of our authority. We can't resolve deed conflicts.
I have a, I had my survey...
Is that understood? See that, now you're free to present them, you've got an audience and you can, you can present them.
Yep.
But just know who you're talking to and the limits of our authority.
So, who has the authority to put a, um, a legal authority to put an incorrect plan on the town warrant, to put it up for a vote on the town warrant?
We don't put anything on the warrant.
This would be a petition by the residents.
So, who accepts it? Who accepts it?
Yeah, the plan is incorrect.
The select board.
The select board says, do they, do they go by anything that you comment on? Do they, do they analyze your comments or your, your way of looking at this information? Do they, do they accept any of your information when you look at this information that we're presenting?
Um, yes, for instance, if we voted to have this strip of dirt not require the subdivision road standards, they would, I presume, respect that.
Can I make a few comments?
Please, that's why you're here tonight. And I'm, I'm just trying to set a, set a background, you know?
As far as this plan, this new plan goes by Zoc, has anybody found out if that, this plan is registered? Is it registered in the court of deeds yet?
I did not, so I can only speak for myself.
It, it is not, then you're saying? Or you don't, you don't know if it is?
No, you asked me if I had determined it. And I'm reporting that I have not determined it.
Okay, so nobody knows if it's been recorded?
Well, I'd have to look at the plan.
Okay.
It might say it on it.
We do have a recorded plan in the, plan of, registry of deeds. And we had a, uh, a, uh, we have, since two thousand and thirteen, we've had that plan. We've also had a title search done by our lawyer, which I don't think many other residents have had done that for this new proposal. So, we're presenting a, a title search that has been done by a lawyer. We are presenting a registered plan by, done by an engineer and a surveyor. That's what we're presenting to you right now, and it's, it does not agree with this new plan. That's why we're here, to tell you that it does not agree with this new... As far as our land is concerned, I am not telling the rest of the road, I'm just saying in front of our land, it does not agree with what I...
And I hear you loud and clear, I just don't wanna set you up for disappointment that we're not the ones who are gonna ever resolve that. Alright.
Well, I'm, I'm asking about the legality of putting an incorrect layout plan up for a town vote. You know? Should I have, should I come with my lawyer, and I don't, I have no idea. Because Ms., Ms. Reed did state that she didn't wanna do any title work until after the, the, you know, the, the road was accepted. That, you know, especially being a cartway, it was just never laid out. That's not the proper procedure, you need to, if you're gonna vote on something, you need to know what you're voting on.
Yes, we, we, as a planning board, don't set that vote. That vote, that article is written and applied to the town meeting by the selectmen, which is the next process step after we get done with this. We have, I think, forty-five days to respond from February second, somewhere in there. We've got about two more weeks to get back to them. Or we can be silent, and it will move automatically.
But if you have somebody that's in indifference of what has been presented to you as far as that new plan, do you say anything about that to the other boards?
Well, we could, we could perhaps liberate it and say something about it. I don't know that we, that our word carries any authority, because we're not the ones that resolve deed conflicts.
Well, what we wanna do tonight is to let everyone know that we are in disagreement with this new plan. And that's on the...
That's perfectly fair.
And we have proof for that, we did present a, a new, a registered plan.
You have it right here, this is a registered plan.
A title search.
So, you have, you have pins set?
Yes.
In the corners?
Yep, matter of fact, Zoc came out, went and did his preliminary work, and he spray painted them all up. Never used them, I don't know why. No title searches were done, so...
Well, we, we just ran the agenda again in a week, right?
Well, we have it, in, in a week, where we, what we tried to do was, um, set up next week's meeting as widely publicized as we could. It's not our requirement that we have a hearing, which is different than a meeting. It is our requirement that we have a meeting. So, we took the opportunity to set a single agenda item meeting next week. But we followed some of the procedures that a hearing would have, would have followed. Two weeks' notice, and noticing the newspapers, keep me straight here, just a minute. Noticing the newspapers.
Gardening news.
And, and a letter went out to all the abutters.
Two letters, 'cause I messed up the first one.
That's alright, but, um, a letter to the abutters, so that... We're doing our best to give the public an opportunity to get informed.
And what we're here for is to inform this board of what we're against.
And that's why, I'm welcoming, I'm welcoming your presentation, I'm not trying to turn it off. What I'm trying to say is we have limited ability to respond to some of the concerns.
But as long as the board knows about our disagreement with the new plan, we just wanna make sure that everybody gets to know that.
And now, you're, you're free to return to your presentation and say anything, anything you want, it's yours, but...
Well, we pretty much gave you the details, you, you do have a copy of the title search, I believe, right?
Right.
You gave us that by electronic?
The selectmen have it too, yeah, it's just that the title search in simple, it says, "The woman sold me the land in nineteen seventy-seven, she can't resell it to the Romanos twenty-nine years old later, when she already sold it to me."
That's what your lawyer said, he broke that up.
Yes, yes.
That's right.
Actually, I have another lawyer kinda said it too, that worked a little bit on it. This, this lawyer that I did, had the title searched in, that's his specialty. So, he was just a real estate, that's why I chose him.
But, we're not land courts.
Right.
We're not, you know? But, but you came on the agenda, you're free to come here tonight and say whatever you wanna say, and I wanna make sure you, you feel welcome to do that. I just wanted to clarify our role.
So, if this layout plan that we feel is incorrect comes up before the town warrant and gets voted in, who would, uh, proceed to take the town to land court, or the land, town would take me to land court?
I'm not certain. I, I really am not certain. It, it is outside my world of experience as a, as a person and as a planning board member, we don't...
Wouldn't town council look at this article that's coming up for the warrant to see if it's legal or not?
I believe they review every article, but the articles aren't ours, they're the select board's. You know, we don't, we don't write the arti...
So, it's up to the selectmen to determine that?
I, I, I don't know if they're the ultimate determiners, but they're the first base I would go to.
Of all the articles, okay.
Have you spoken to Mr., is it Zoc, the guy who laid it out?
Oh, Zoc, Mr. Zoc?
Mr. Zoc.
No, we're still waiting for his response why he, um, went, entered into our land in two thousand and three to create a new road line. He never responded to the town.
Have you seen, have you copied him on this letter, is he aware of the, of the issues here?
You mean as our, our plan, our previous, uh, survey plan, is that what you mean?
If he did a title search, their lawyer contacted up, Mrs. Phillips, and if a title search had been done, they would have found that we had a registered...
A registered surveyor, before he does any surveying, should look into all the deeds and the previous plans if they're recorded, which ours was recorded, apparently he did not.
Well...
That's my, my...
If he did a title...
I'm not gonna defend him, but, but really, a, a land surveyor is not a title examiner. But my question is much more simple than that, it's just that, has this problem been presented to him, and is he gonna come to us next week?
I, yes, I did, I went up to see him and I told, I, because I knew that we had had the survey done, and I told him we don't own up to the traveled way, okay? He, uh, was very derogatory to me, and, you know, he said, "I'll, I will put the road where I want it." And I said, "I have a registered plan, it's up at the courthouse." So, as a surveyor, he is, you know, he...
He's responsible to look at previous plans.
Responsible to go and do the title searches and to, and to do the research for the plan, it's up at, it's up at the registry.
Now, again, if Mr. Zoc was here tonight, and he presented his side of the story, so to speak, we, again, cannot adjudicate the who's right.
Right. At least you know, at least you know, you, you know what's going on.
Yes, and so does the public, right, and that's why you're, right.
You know how we feel about this, that's right.
Could I just say one, um, thing? Um, when, I think Sharon, when you had your plan done, um, your, your registered plan, your plan includes your property boundary lines, right? As well as...
No, the surveyor put the, the, the property line.
Right, but it, your...
It goes by my deed.
Right, but you have...
That I have, that I bought the land in nineteen seventy-seven, 'cause I had an extensive title search done.
Yes, I know.
And that's what's very important about laying out anything, especially a pot road that was never laid out, it's just a dirt road to get to a bunch of woodlots. I used to do layouts, and I never, ever did one before I did a title search.
So, what I wanted to, to bring out is that your survey has your property lines on it. What Zoc did is a road layout, it doesn't include any property lines.
Well, we own right up to, we own right up to the road, the edge of the road, and thus, under Massa- Massachusetts general laws, we own to the middle of the road.
And nobody is disputing that, it's just the difference in the type of plans. His is a road layout, yours has your property lines on it, that's why they're different.
No, his doesn't, he's, his...
Does not, correct.
His shows that we, that we don't own up to the traveled way.
It doesn't show anybody's property lines.
It, it does, it does. Okay, thank you.
Ding, end of round one. We're, we're gonna...
Okay, we're done.
Well, I, I don't mean to hustle you off, what I'm trying to say is, this discussion is exactly the kind of discussion that we can't adjudicate. We can't, we can't resolve this, this deed shows this, and this layout shows this, and this layout shows that. We can't pull them together with our crystal ball and say, "Oh, that one's right."
Right.
You know, we can't do that. It's just, just beyond our knowledge and authority.
The legality of putting an incorrect plan up before a town vote, so...
Okay, I believe that's what the procedure would be. You make your case in public before the town votes, and you'll have, I think, an opportunity before the selectmen as well. You know, you...
We just don't want this to be, this to be accepted before we have a say on it.
Right, we, we cannot...
We're not willing to give our property to the layout.
We cannot accept the plan, uh, or a road layout as, as the plan. What our singular issue before us is whether or not, if and when such a road came into existence, would it have to meet the zoning bylaw road specifications? 'Cause we control the zoning bylaw road specifications, and we also have the authority to issue a waiver. And we did once, last year, we, we did that.
I do have a question, uh, from a planning board perspective, does the planning board rely therefore on the, the, the maps or the, the, um, the plans that are in question? Will you, uh, do, does this planning board rely on these maps? That's, that's, it's a very fundamental question, in order to make this, in order to make this decision.
I don't know the answer to the question, and the key word you're using is rely. And, and, um, I don't know if the question that I just expressed can be answered without reliance on any plan. It's a, it's a waiver or not waiver, that's the question. And I'm not sure it requires reliance on a plan, so the answer to your question is, I don't know. Is that clear?
Well, your answer is clear, that you don't know.
Well, as clear as I can make it. Well, I don't want misinterpretation, these are, these seem to be hot topics, and I would like to be as clearly understood as I can be.
I'm not bringing it up to, as a hot topic, I'm just simply saying, I'm, I'm asking the question for a simple reason, and that is that if, if the plan would be a, an important element to make this decision, then having a reliable plan is what is key, and that's all, that's all I'm trying to ask or present.
That's what I'm saying.
A plan, a plan should go by what a deed says. A deed is probably the, one of the most important things that...
But I think in granting a waiver, I mean, we could say, maybe this is a, a point that, that we wouldn't have to build out to, you know, the, the right of way, and then the paved part of the right of way, the way that you would have to put a new road in, that's what they're saying, some, he's saying, some waivers could be granted. So, I think the question is though, if we were going to grant those waivers, um, would they have to come back to us and request those waivers? I think they would, showing the areas where those waivers were needed to suit... We want more detail on, it probably isn't the only spot that would require some sort of waiver, the kind of waiver they're looking for would have to be described to us.
The way it would be, be the whole road, um, that's what the, the request is before us next week, is to review the concept of the road.
Do we have a formal request for next week? Has, has there an applicant come?
There's not an applicant, it's, um, the petition was forwarded to us by a vote of the select board for review, and that's what, that's what we're doing next week.
So, I think, I think we need to know what they're asking for in the way of waivers.
I have the thing for next week.
Well, next week is next week.
We look up, I understand.
We, we, we said that we would try to inform the public to the maximum extent possible, and I don't want tonight to decrease or preempt next week. Next week, when all the abutters show up and we have a room full of people, we'll go through this petition, and that's the right way to do it, 'cause what we're interested in is serving the public as best we can.
I just want you to be aware that the, this, this, these lines and bearings, these are incorrect, that we own up to this dash line, which is travel way, and thus to the middle of the road.
That's a cut from Zoc's latest plan?
Correct. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I hope, I hope it helped a little. Thank you very much. It's got an A and R?
So, John Farnsworth is my surveyor, and he came along...
Are you Kathleen?
I'm Kathy, yes.
How you say your last name?
Dersias.
Dersias, thank you.
I've been here since, my family's been here since nineteen twenty, we've been around a few years. Almost a hundred.
Thank you.
Oh, and you asked me to bring these, uh, here's the form. And you also asked me to get signatures from my siblings, because we all, four of us own the property.
Did you have this?
I need that, yes, please.
It's handed to me, but I'll just remember the form, I'm not gonna work here. So, there's a copy of this for everybody though, right?
Yes, that was also emailed to you.
Okay.
These three sheets.
Um, along with others, yes, along with that, well, I don't know if it was that copy.
Oh, this is new, I sent this to you, I think, last night or yesterday afternoon.
Then that was what was forwarded to the floor.
I've made some minor additions.
Since yesterday?
No, no, since I had brought this up about two weeks ago.
Okay.
This is this one that you emailed. Is this a, this is what she emailed to us?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, so, this is a blow up of that?
No, no.
Let's, let's stop for a second. What is the governing document?
Well, uh, my name is John Farnsworth.
Thank you, John, we, I thought, I'm sorry, we skipped over introductions, but I used your name earlier.
I, I think that if I try and explain what we'd like to accomplish, you know, you can tell us how best we could get to that place. you know, you can tell us how best we could get to that place. The Kathy's daughter Christine and her husband Luke Alberg live here at seventy-five Old Princeton Road. And Kathy owns this property and-
And originally, we owned it all.
Yes.
All is inside both the pink and the orange line?
Yes. It was my, my parents', so.
And this, also.
Right.
But we'll, we'll get to that.
Okay.
What we'd like to do is transfer some property to Luke and Christine. This parcel, which is what I have here in red, and the green piece here is the remainder of Kathy's, Kathy and her siblings' properties. Now, what this is, is this parcel lies between two record plans. They're both on the same bearing system, and it matches the bearing system in the road. Now, this would be Christine and Luke's lot, which is, you know, right in here. And this is the butters' property at seventy-nine Old Princeton Road.
You're pointing to the white part?
Yes, yeah. This line would be this line right here. And the original deed for the properties had three parcels and three tracks. And the original track really ran up here like this and approximated about ten acres. And what I've done is try and, you know, work between the record plans. And we've come up from the end of this wall up here to the next wall, come up the wall, and back over to the stake and stones that I think was in the original ten-acre parcel. What we found there was pile of stones with an iron pipe in it, stake and stones. Now, I haven't shown the entire parcel because I think there's about twenty-five acres. So what I've done is put a note on here that the remainder has, we, we exceed the minimum area in frontage here and over on Hillville Road. Now, I haven't located, located any, any potential wetlands here because this is really just the parcel. And if Luke and Christine were ever to try and build something, then they would go back and trigger that threshold and apply for a building permit. Also, I'm not really sure there's a wet area in here. It may be a drainway, and we've marked where the stream comes, you know, right in here. And like I say, it's not a perennial stream. We've been down there many, many times, and it's dry. Like I say, it may be a drainway, which I think has a much different connotation than a wet area. We don't see a lot of hydroxic soil there either.
So basically, all we're trying to accomplish is give Chris and Luke the remainder of that parcel that my parents had originally on their home. On the deed, we have three parcels. This would have been one of the parcels.
Yeah, and a little bit of some of the rest of it.
Tiny bit extra. That'll be written off on the deed part, you know, when we do-
What we're doing is-
Legal part.
Taking a two-point-one-nine acre parcel and making it about eleven acres and adding eighty-eight feet of frontage over here.
So we just need your blessing.
Where, where is the frontage on the pink lot?
This is Old Princeton.
Right here.
But eighty-eight feet isn't enough frontage for a house lot, is it?
No.
No, no.
If I, if I understand-
Yeah, I guess I've lost-
This is being added to-
Right.
This piece.
They're being annexed, what is the word?
A joined.
A joined?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so when you're done, parcel A and the existing orange highlighted house lot become one thing?
Right. Because originally, we broke this off just in case. Chris was twenty-two years old. Just in case she didn't finish paying for the house or something and she lost it. We didn't want to lose everything, so we broke it off. This is two acres. Now, we want to give it back to them.
But what, you're giving back the whole pink area?
Yeah, all of this, yep.
Pink and orange will be joined and annexed and combined.
But it's not the entire piece that Kathy and her brothers and sisters-
No, we have another area.
And this is probably-
Thirty-two acres, I believe. Around thirty anyway.
Yeah, it's between twenty and thirty.
And its frontage would be on-
Hillville.
Hillville, and it's got plenty of frontage on Hillville. So you don't create a landlocked situation.
However-
Plus, I have land that, that, a bunch of it as well.
Is that, I'm sorry.
And this would become just one house lot?
Yes.
When you combine the frontage, you don't have enough for two?
No.
So you could divide it again? No, it's just-
No, I-
The frontage for, for the house that's already there?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Believe me, they don't want another house here.
There's, there's two things operating here. One is drawings that are helpful, and they explain it to us. The other thing is what we require on an approval-not-required plan. And I see some differences. This is a good explanatory document, good talking document. But what we say in our A and R rules, and correct me if I'm wrong, Christine, Christine, I believe what we would require would be the drawing of the B lot because it is being altered. And it, well-
It's costing us a fortune.
You'll have to speak to him about that.
No, well, it's not his fault.
But I'm not saying it can't just be another sheet right up there, okay? Just, let's make it easy as we can. Just make sheet two and push that definition out there. I don't know the scale of things. It looks like it might not, might even exceed sheet two, but-
Well, I, if, if it were to be okay with you folks-
Make a different scale.
I'd make it at a different scale and get it to fit on the drawing.
Because theoretically, you're, you're, this is a, I presume this is enough frontage for housing. So they are lots, and what you're doing is chipping away at that. And what you really should do for your own protection, I'm not saying this because I'm a thick-headed bureaucrat. I'm saying it because you're changing good lots, and you want to show what they are and make that part of the registered package so that no one can challenge what that is. You can't change it and not tell anybody about it. We gotta change it and put it into the, as part of this plan, into the registry, all right? So this is not to satisfy bureaucracy. This is to satisfy when you go along and try to sell this next time. It's clean. It's understood. It's registered. You took some makers away from it, and it's all well-defined and stamped by the planning board, okay? That's what we're trying to do. We're not trying to unwisely spend your money or, or cause you any work. It results in a good, defined package. Does that make sense, Mr. Farnsworth?
Oh, certainly.
All right. That's what we recommend.
We love making maps.
Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
What happens with this, this piece of land that's left?
That's another person's-
That's a different house.
The-
It's under separate ownership at the present time.
Everything to this side of the, the red line here belongs to seventy-nine. And, and it's on their recorded plan right there.
Okay, and so, does that have, is that a non-conforming lot, or does that have frontage?
That's, I guess.
It says it has seventy-nine feet of frontage.
The, the deeds for this property probably go back to the nineteen twenties or before.
Before zoning, okay.
And, you know, although, all of it is kind of loose- Without the field data, it would be really difficult to try and figure out things here, but-
But you never owned that other piece. It's always been in-
Originally, it was my grandparents' place, yes.
Yes, yeah.
So it's all been split off.
This was part of the original, I think, the ten-acre tract that's described in the deed. And this was taken out. The current deed that Kathy and her siblings have, really have, have this piece removed, this piece removed, and the three that are on Hillville Road, they've all been accepted out.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I was asking-
That was the plan. Each of the kids got some, you know.
It's not necessarily complicated, but there's a lot of bookkeeping, a lot of accounting there.
I missed, I missed that part of the conversation because I was asking Christine for the A and R hit list.
I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm just trying to-
What was your question?
My question was, this, this piece of land here, which is-
That little piece, yep.
This little piece.
It's owned by Mr. Vincent West.
Yes, I, I believe that-
Or Miss-
Yes, she's-
Which is, and it was separated out prior to zoning or prior to requiring more, the, the frontage?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, nineteen fifty, they bought that place. My grandparents bought it in nineteen twenty.
Talking subdivision control nineteen fifty.
Long time ago.
There wasn't any, yeah.
Yeah.
We knew where you bought it back then.
And also, you know, I would, we, we've monumented all the points along there. Took us quite a while. There's about a dozen monument locations there.
And, and the cart road is not yours?
The cart road, I, I think that there was an old road that came up like this through here. And this was a right-of-way.
I meant the right-of-way. I can't read it from here.
Yeah.
The right-of-way is not yours.
Yeah. Well, the right-of-way does belong to Kathy. It's in her deed. It was reserved in her deed. So you can see it's on the other side of the property line.
So that, actually, this road followed the entire distance of that property line, right?
Yes, yeah.
All the way up to the far corner there.
Well, the right-of-way is described, you know, is following that, twelve, twelve feet.
Okay.
What I'm trying to ask is, who owns this right-of-way?
Kathy.
And that is an easement on the other person's property?
Well, yeah, it's described in the, it's described in the deed.
As an easement on the other person's property?
Well, it's described as a right-of-way.
Okay.
It's no man's land, as, as far as I can understand. Nobody really owns it. Anybody can use it.
Well, it's, it's described in Kathy's deed.
Right. Then we have a, and I believe this is on our website, we have a list of things that have to be on a plan. They're called four-point-oh-two requirement of the plan for a approval-not-required. "A plan not requiring approval shall be prepared by a registered land surveyor and shall be clearly and legally drawn in the requirements of the recording rules adopted by the Registry of Deeds. If multiple sheets are used, an index sheet showing the entire plan shall accompany them. A plan not requiring approval shall contain the following information." Now, did you get an opportunity to review this?
I actually used that to create the drawing. And the only thing that we, I think that we didn't put on here was, you know, whether or not there were any resource areas. And we did not depict the whole-
The green part.
Yeah, which would be probably about thirty acres.
I do think you need a plan of this, though, because this is a new lot being created.
That's what I already said, above sheet two. But property boundaries, north point, date, and scale. I see the north point.
And a scale, yep.
See a locus, see a scale?
The dates there.
Name of the record owner, name of the registered land surveyor, and the Worcester County Registry of Deeds book and page reference of conveyance to the record owner.
I think we have all that in here.
All right.
We've got a plethora of information.
Yeah.
Excuse me, but up at the top, above the words parcel A, there's like a little mountain of pink there. And you have four such designations.
Yeah, those are my brothers and sisters. Sister.
Well, does that point to four different parcels, or does that-
No, we all own it.
They're four owners.
One piece.
Yeah, the, the four of them owned the property.
It was given to us in trust.
Yeah. I've got copies of the deeds. We'd like to spend a lot of time here. We've had all kinds of-
Two and a half years.
I just think you need, you need some kind of a plan of, of the other parcel. Because the way you look at A and R plans, it's, when you divide, you know, parcel in two, you're creating two new parcels. You're not just creating one new parcel, right? But I don't think you have to go out and, I mean, you may be able to put that, that together with the information you've got.
Well, I was gonna say, I might try and compile that. Although we have, we, we did survey all the way up Hillville Road to the other end of Kathy's property, up, up by her brother's house. So we have a lot of information.
You could compile it sufficiently so it would be recordable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, I don't know that he would need to, you need to change this plan. You just need to-
Well, I wouldn't, this, I think this is, you know, very tight, well-represented. We can add, add-
Just put another note on it that says-
Yeah, well, I can change this and say sheet two.
Yeah.
One of two, two of two. The, I had a very elderly woman in Worcester ask me if we could do something immediately. She said, "We need it fast." And I told her that, you know, I've been called a lot of things over the years, but never fast. We try to give it what it needs.
Area, number three is area of each lot.
This is interesting because he's putting a lot with it. So he, his area of his first lot would be the sum total of those two because he's merging them, right?
Yeah, and that's detailed in the table.
Okay, and then, but you would need to have the parcel B, which is the remaining land, with a calculation of its area.
That's correct.
We can do that.
The green part.
Let me just put it a little closer. Now you see where-
He doesn't need to pay for three lots. He just needs to pay for two lots, right?
That's correct.
The, we're kind of mixing terms. I, I would still call this a parcel. It's not really a lot.
Okay.
The, you know, this conforms to the, you know, your current zoning, so that would be a lot. And this probably predates zoning, so that would be a lot. A good example would be the, the nice folks that were here a few minutes ago. They were talking about registering property. Well, it's recorded. There's a big difference between registration and recording.
Right. Right, I'm not talking about registering. Just something, just having a recordable plan.
Yes, yes. I, I think their plan was recorded at the registry. It wasn't, you know, headed to Land Court.
I'm on item number three, area of each lot. Now, when you end up, what, what you're doing is combining and annexing and conjoining or whatever you want to call these two things. When you have this area, is that parcel A or the combined total?
No, no. I, I've got down here-
Okay, this note.
Yes.
Seventy-five Old Princeton Road is two-point-one-nine acres. And this one is eight-point-eight-five acres. After transfer, the conjo- adjoint frontage is this, and the adjoint is these two things. What's the area of this?
Two-point-one-nine.
Acres.
Acres. So we add the two together, we get a little over eleven.
Yep. "Sufficient data determine the location, direction, and length of every street and way line, lot line, and boundary line monuments or references necessary to establish these lines on the ground." Well, as we've said, recommend you include the, the green. We're practical. Boundary lines of continuous- We're practical, boundary lines of continuous and contiguous and adjacent land, and names of owners thereof, as determined from the most recent tax list. So all these are adjacent. This one's adjacent, this really isn't adjacent, but you've informed us.
Yeah, well, it's adjacent up here, I mean, that's, would be valid.
Where does, where does he end?
Uh, he ends probably a little bit before that.
Yeah, fifty, fifty feet or so.
Yeah.
You, you should show that because he's a pink, he's a pink end. Like down here, that line is irrelevant, but a pink one should show.
And above that, I believe it's owned by James Dersius, according to the assessor's map.
Yeah, my husb- me.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. But this is just, you know, this is just so friggin disgusting. Here we are, a hundred years here, and we're going through this bull just to get our li- property back to my daughter. And it's bull, it's just baloney. Excuse me for venting.
Well, that's fine, but it, it's not baloney.
It is.
Because the next time someone tries to deal with this land, if it's not straight and clear, you've, you've damaged yourself. So, let's go back to work. We're practical, boundary lines of contiguous, contiguous and adjacent, all right. Number six, location of all permanent monuments properly identified. I have a question about this one. What is this thing here?
All I've done is put a cross tie in here, uh, this is an interior wall that runs up here and ends right there. Uh, and we actually found a drill hole in it, and that was shown on one of the other record plans.
And so this segment of this parcel A is not a separate segment?
Yeah, no, and I've just put, I've labeled it as a cross tie. Now, when I do these plans, uh, I try to make them as compatible with what's on record, and, uh, so that, you know, people can come back and figure out, uh, like, this, this, this here, here. Those were existing on Christine's plan. And, you know, tie this plan directly to the, uh, two thousand and six book.
Who owns this? Say owners unknown.
Uh, the assessors have no, we, we couldn't get any information out of that.
I spoke to the assessor today, it's owned by the town of Hovers.
It is?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not what I got, what I went up there last Thursday.
Okay, I'm sorry, good looking.
No, 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 that's okay.
I talked to George today, so.
But there, there's no description of what's over there, and as we go up here, uh, if you look at the green piece there, it looks like there's four pieces. Uh, the top two, you know, are attributed to the town's ownership, and I went through the deeds for those, and they're, uh, I'll, I'll just simply say, I, I think it's very fortunate that we have a wall that runs up all the way that is our light of occupation.
There's a couple of landlot pieces in there, I believe, that no one owns, the town owns.
The ones would be between the wetlands here and the.
Yeah, in fact, the top two, if I run the deeds back, it looks like they would take it for tax title.
Yeah.
And I, I assume that, that, the, the piece over here, uh, was the same.
I just think that, I mean, this is a very elaborate plan, you rarely see that one with this great detail in it, but I do think that when you divide a piece of land with an A and R plan, you do have to show the whole original lot and where you're dividing it. So I don't think, I'm trying to give you a hard time, I don't think we can legally let you out of some kind of a plan.
But we made that point, haven't we? We made that point.
But that's what she's unhappy about, because it takes, it takes more effort, but.
I, I've, I've seen it done both ways.
You've seen it done this way, I've never seen it done that way.
Unfortunately, I've probably seen it done every way you could do it.
All right, if we could return to our list. Location, names, and present width of non-public, i.e. private ways abutting the property. Are there any private ways?
I don't think we have any.
Okay. Suitable space to record the endorsement of the board.
It's here.
Uh, of the board. This doesn't read quite right, but of the board's signatures for the approval is not required, and the signatures of the members of the board. Okay? Zoning classification and location of any zoning district boundaries that may lie within the locus of the plan.
I think the whole parcel is in the residential ag zone district.
He's got it out, residential agricultural zone.
They call it out over there, I think it's got over there too. Right here.
Very good.
May be true of the rest of this?
I guess, I, I believe so.
In the case of the creation of a new lot, the remaining land area and frontage of the land and the ownership of the applicant, uh, shall be shown. And that's theoretically what we've done, when, when you carve off some of that, you've made a new lot over there, that's the, that's the logic. Location of all existing buildings, including setback and side and yard designations.
These are the existing buildings, and, uh, I didn't put the offsets in there, uh, because we're, we're really adding a piece to it, so we're making it more conforming, but we can, we can add that, in fact, um. The.
What, what you?
The offsets are actually shown on the two thousand and six plan.
Take a look at it.
This one would be different.
Yes, but it would be more conforming.
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty-three goes to two hundred or something.
There's no, are there any structures on the other part, what piece of land, the green?
No.
Okay.
We've been all over it, and we haven't found any yet, but. A lot of trees, and one huge giant stone.
I asked you to add three dimensions, just like you had, only instead of thirty-three, just shoot it over to there and put a number on it.
I can do that.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd wanted to go up there and write sixteen twenty on the, uh, stone out in the forest.
Few else.
This one and that one, just like you already have.
Yeah.
But this, this piece of paper isn't part of the plan, so that's why we're moving the numbers over, all right? Location and area of any wetlands on the lots being created by the plan, including the lot being created by the remaining land. Let me read that over again so I get the emphasis on the right syllable. Location and area of any wetlands on the lots being created by the plan, including the lot being created by the remaining land. In lieu of delineating the wetlands on the remaining land, the applicant may provide written certification from the surveyor or professional engineer who prepared the plan, that the remaining parcel of land contains the minimum required upland area required under zoning bylaws. So you have a choice, you can show the wetlands, or you can declare that those wetlands don't affect the ultimate use of the land for the minimum required upland.
Well, I think I would elect to do that, uh, like I say.
Well, you've already got your house built, so it doesn't really matter, but you put a written statement on it.
Yeah, we can put a statement on there, the, like I say, I'm not sure whether it actually is or it isn't, uh, I suspect that may be a grain lay, which is different than.
Is, is or isn't what?
Uh, a, a, uh, uh, the Land Protection Act resource area.
But it says if it's being created by the lot, right? If it's being created, we're not creating anything.
No, but we can, we can say we have the requisite.
Yeah, that's all, a simple statement, you see it on almost all the plans. The A and R approval does not constitute compliance with zoning requirements for building purposes.
And, uh, wasn't there a fourteenth one that we?
No, that is the thirteenth.
Oh, that is the thirteenth one, okay.
That has to be written on there so that we know that, uh, the plan is aware of it, it doesn't constitute.
Well, I think that I, I have a, uh, statement on there that you, you know, using boilerplate for this, that indicates that all you're looking at is really the area and the frontage.
That's right. And it's not further subdivisible anyway, so, all right, now we, you know, we hear you that it's, it's, um, entering into some level of detail, but I want you to understand that we go through the same list for every applicant for an A and R.
Oh, I'm.
There's no.
So if I come back with the, with the second drawing, he doesn't have to come the second time. You, you could see.
Do a good job and make it stick for itself, and, uh, we'd be glad to read it.
We'll take a shot at it.
Christina, did you have another concern that the, I think the, the, um, the, the GIS maps are notoriously not, uh, deed-driven, if I could call it that.
Taxes, yeah, they certainly are.
I'm very glad that you said, I just didn't wanna go there.
Well, they're not meant to be, they're, they're meant to be representations.
I can't, you know, try and get a handle on everything, uh, I actually scanned the, uh, uh, GIS stuff so that I could superimpose it into the, and see how everything lined it, lined up, Ed. You know, it was, it was close, I, you know, but there were a lot of.
Well, it does actually show, the GIS map actually shows going up this stone wall, over, and then back, so I don't know if we've created a.
Well, this, this comes up, goes over, and then comes, this dimension is, is that jog right there.
All right, so this pink isn't owned by that lot?
Yes, it is.
Up, over, and then up.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a little stone wall there.
It goes, uh, up the wall, then over, and then here.
All right, so if you go up the wall, who owns that side of the wall?
Oh, they do.
Who owns that side of the wall?
Oh, you know, you're absolutely right, the, uh, I got a little carried away there with the gray on.
Okay, that's what my point was. And then we, uh, go up, go around, and.
I think my only thing was when I looked at the map, I didn't see this, but it looks like that's the piece they're cutting out to give up there, I just didn't see it, so I was a little confused there.
What is that, Christina, I didn't understand.
Right here.
I think it actually.
You have ninety-five.
Yeah, I think it.
It goes in like this, and then comes back out, but it looks like they've taken a piece off of this lot here and added it to this one.
Yeah, but I think it, it projects up like this, uh, that makes sense.
Yeah, that, your finger is on there.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
And then you shoot across.
Yeah, well, this, this really is, should be cranked around a little more that way.
Yeah, it's up a little high.
Yeah, yeah.
But, and then.
Yeah.
So this is the piece that's coming out of the green, and you've gotta show that coming out of the green, and then you've gotta show what's left of the green, all right?
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate your time, and, uh, it's been a pleasure to come up.
I shouldn't have to pay you back when I come back.
Wait a minute.
I think.
Sure.
What do we do with the, what do we do with the two lots thing?
I'm sorry?
He has to pay for the two lots, right?
What I'm getting at is there's two.
Not, not three, because one's being.
Two are being created, yes, two are being created.
Now, I'll take these back.
You say you have the list, right, Mr. Farnsworth?
Yes.
Okay, good. And so we look forward to seeing you as soon as you, is there a time, is there a time sensitivity here, we could, uh, we have a meeting next week, that, uh, we could, we could push this through pretty quick if you, if you needed it. It's up to you.
I think our, our, we'd just like to be able to.
It's two fifty per lot, and there are two being created.
We'd just like to be able to finish.
I'm not gonna say anything, take the one check, and I'll have to bring you another one.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Unless you, you want, want some money?
No.
Okay.
We don't, we don't really need that tonight.
I'm not, yeah, but I'm not gonna hit Chris O'Leary for that again. I'll have to pay that one.
Well, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening, ma'am.
I can feel the cold air just from one.
I know.
So can we.
It's getting colder.
How we doing, Craig, are you gonna survive, or?
Before we move on to another topic, I'd like to point out one quick thing I didn't feel comfortable bringing up because she was already very agitated, and that is that an A and R has to be done between two plots of land that are owned by the same party, and while they own the big one, that we wanted, the, the green.
The green.
And they own the red, they do not own, own the orange, that is their daughter's plot, so we can A and R the sixty-three into the ni- parcel ninety-five, but we can't then annex into the other one because it's not owned by the same parties. I talked to the assessor's office this morning, and they were very clear about that, you cannot annex two properties that are not specifically owned, and I don't mean one's a trust and one's, it could be you, and you have a trust, and they're both in your name, it doesn't matter, if one says Craig Boyzino, and the other one says Craig Boyzino's trust.
It's not the same entity.
It's not the same entity, and you cannot annex them, so we can.
All right, what do we do?
I did let him know that in the email that I sent him today.
You let Mr. Farnsworth know that?
I did, and Kathleen Dersius in their email today, so I was very surprised when I saw that, I apologize for not bringing it up, but she was standing right here, but she was obviously very agitated.
Well, yeah, she, she was not, uh, ready for more news, but.
Exactly, but.
I'm surprised he didn't address it because you gave it to him.
I did, I emailed him today, and I copied you on that time, because again, they kept sending me the same drawings, this has been on my table for two months, but as an incomplete application, and so, when I, I told them several times that you can't annex if it's not on paper.
This is your seventy-five Old Princeton Road memo?
Um, give me one second, I'm sorry.
Property which is being transferred, you have contained in this property part of parcel sixty-three to parcel ninety-five.
Yeah, that one.
All right, so I can, I can send Mr. F- uh, with the board's permission, you, you shouldn't have to fight these battles.
Yeah, as I said, it was just, I was just trying to.
Let me, let me send a, a quick, um, note to Mr. Farnsworth saying, uh, we noted that tonight's plan didn't address item number one.
No, it's actually, it's the second paragraph, also while I understand your intent, it's the second paragraph, not one, two, or three.
Item number two below. Oh.
Also while I understand your intent with the parcel attached drawings, it's to transfer the changed parcel ninety-five to Christine Dersius parcel three, I checked with the Hovers and Assessor's Office, and this A and R cannot encompass the transfer because the two plots are not owned by the same person.
So they have to transfer it first?
What they're going to have to do is, they can do this A and R for sixty-three and ninety-five, we can do that, no problem, but then what they're going to have to do is they'll sell that parcel, even if they sell it for a dollar, according to the assessor's office.
That's right.
To Christine, and then Christine will own both parcels, and she can annex them if she wishes to, but we can't permit her to, um, transfer it with the exact same A and R.
We, we can approve it, it only has eighty-three feet of frontage.
I don't, I mean, it's, it's a lot that's already been there, so I don't know if we can, they're just changing the dimensions of the lot, with the intention of selling it to them, so.
Wait a minute, this, should be that, so she, they own this piece already?
No, well, here, let me show you.
Someone does.
The daughter owns this piece.
Yes, the daughter owns this piece, it's, it's right here, and.
The mother owns this piece, right.
No, the mother and three other owners own this piece and sixty-three.
Yes, those, those people listed up here.
Yeah, the people listed up here, and then there's another spot over here that is owned, according to the assessor's office, only by James and Kathleen Dersius.
But that's not relevant.
No, it's not, but I'm just saying that there's, so there's a lot of pieces in here.
All right.
But this one, they're planning on taking, um, from sixty-three.
Some of that.
It's like, it, there's, it's like this big, they're taking from sixty-three and giving it to this one, the problem is, we can't then transfer this to this one in the same A and R, because this one is owned by Christine Dersius, according to the assessor's office, and this one is owned by the four other people.
But the three people, the three people can convey this lot to her.
Yes, and we have signatures for that, but because, but the assessor's office says you cannot annex, meaning we can't co-join them with an A and R, two plots of land that are not owned by the same person, so they can do this, and then they can do the bill of sale and sell it to Christine Dersius, but until that happens, we can't.
But the problem with this is that. But the problem with this is that the A N R plan needs, for us to do an A N R plan, it needs to have frontage complying with the existing zoning laws, doesn't it?
I don't know. I, I don't see that in our, our list.
Maybe it doesn't because these two borders already exist. I guess we could do this. They are creating two lots though, because they're creating that lot and they're creating this lot.
Yes, they are.
So what they should.
Again, I didn't mean to not bring this up in front of the.
No, no, Christine, I, I should have.
But she was very agitated and I didn't want to give her more.
I should have read my emails.
I didn't give, I didn't want to give her more bad news.
More carefully.
I think.
Well, I asked them for this for the last month, so the fact that he just got that to me today was the only reason I could reply to him today.
What is the remedy?
I, I think.
The remedy, again, he can do an A N R here. He, we can do this A N R.
No, he can't because he's making a parcel A that only has eighty-three feet of frontage.
It already has eighty-three. He's actually, he's adding to it.
Yeah, but it's not creating a new boundary.
And I don't.
Pardon me?
He's not creating a, a lot with insufficient frontage. The lot already exists with insufficient frontage. But he can put a note on the plan that says this does not constitute a buildable.
Lot.
Lot.
He would have to.
Right.
And then what is the next part of the remedy?
He would then have to sell, they would, these people would have to sell this lot to Christine Derzius for a dollar.
And then they come back in with a new combined A N R.
Then Christine comes in. With a, they would come back in with a, actually, that would be where we would only charge them two hundred and fifty because it's become two into one.
Two into one.
That's right.
But would they have to do that? Can't they just have a deed?
The assessor's office said that you cannot annex two properties that are not owned by the same individual. It doesn't.
His, his plan said they would be annexed, or adjoined.
Yeah, but do you. Right.
Now, I don't know what the word adjoined means. I thought the right words are combined and, it's two words, combined and.
But I don't know that they need to have a final plan that shows these combined as one, as long as this one has a message on it that says.
Non-conforming.
Non, it's a non-conforming lot.
Right, again, but as long as they don't anticipate that this A N R is also going to transfer it to them.
Oh, they can't do that. They know they have to put a deed in it.
Well, but they, they.
But their notes.
But all their, or their notes, and not only that, it's a personal transfer. It's written all over. So I don't know if they meant this to this or this, and this is why, as I said, it's been on my desk for the last couple of months and I keep going.
He's a, he's a surveyor. He knows that recording a plan does not create a transfer, so there's got to be a deed recorded as well. But I don't think he needs, I don't think, you know, I know, you know, just what I know from title work, which is not all that much, but I don't think he has to have a recorded, a separate recorded plan that shows these two combined.
And maybe he's not asking for that, but that was what I was confused about, just so that he knows, I mean, because she was in here saying she just wants to sell it to her daughter. As long as they understand that this A N R is only to do from here to here. It's not to co-join this with this.
It's not co-joining that with it.
No, and see, he's got this, all he has to do is, he says parcel A is to be annexed, right, to be adjoined with Old Princeton Road. And, no, he needs to add the language and does not by itself constitute a buildable lot.
Right.
He needs to add, add that language, but.
Right.
Um, and I don't think his. I, I don't know whether he sho, this, this would be shown as an existing lot.
Right, well, the thing is, he had all that information down here.
Because it exists, so. Yeah.
That talked about what these were together.
Yeah.
And that's what my, that was my concern with it, with all that new, because this is not what I had before.
He was. He was presenting. Right, we're on the mic there.
Oh, sorry.
He was presenting a combo plan.
Yeah, there was all that information here that said.
I think that's a step too far.
Twenty-one feet or eighty-one or a hundred and something feet here plus this, you know what I mean? We, it was, that was where I got the concept from what he sent me today, that he was trying to combine the two.
There's his notes right there. Let's see that sheet.
Right. Frontage to the between, and then he's.
Well, it's, it.
And then Kathleen Derzius addition, you know?
Yeah.
So again, I just wanted, however it gets stated to him, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
See, he'll have his notes down here. This is the combined area, frontage, where we combined eight, two point nine and eight, eight point eight five. Transfer is adjoined, you know? This is, he's doing something with a A N R that I don't think can be done with an A N R. That's left there.
I mean, he could put them, I guess he could put them together with an A, you can put two lots together with an A N R as long as they're both yours.
All right, it, it needs a. It needs a phone call.
Right.
And we shouldn't let him come back in.
I've spoken to him twice on the phone with regards to this in the last two months.
And what did he say?
He, there were discussions of clarifying lines, of, um, annexing properties. It was very confi, I mean, I spoke to him several times and each time I said, I, forgive me, I'm going to have to see the plans. I am confused about what we're discussing.
Okay.
So.
Good. Um. You know what you've said in the past. Do you want to continue the conversation or do you want me to?
I have no problem. You may if you wish. I just, I would rather, as I said, with regards to this, I've said it very succinctly in the email I sent to him today.
Uh, I could. Mm-hmm.
And that's why I was very confused that he came in with those two.
Um, what's the, on Thursday?
Yes.
Do you work?
Yes.
Um, might we sit at your desk and call him in a conference call and, and, uh.
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure I will contribute as much as you because you have this, this knowledge that you've done some research on, but I'd like to. My, my purpose of being on the call would be to make sure that when he comes in next time, this moves appropriately.
But my point is here, I, I don't think he would have to have on record a plan that shows these conjoined.
Not yet.
He would have to have, he would have to have this parcel, the green and the red. Shown on plans is, a parcel's being divided, and then the mother.
Right.
Can convey to the two children this lot.
Right.
As described on this plan.
Exactly, and that's what I mean. I think, I think he took a couple extra steps on this that maybe.
So.
He's got, he's actually got too much claim.
So if you could just tell him, if he could eliminate the.
Yes.
The after merger.
The adjoining.
The after merger, yeah.
Information.
Then we can move ahead with just the A N R, which does only lot sixty-three and ninety-five.
Right.
It doesn't hurt to have the information there, but he can't have the claim that it's going to be adjoined and, and, and combined.
Those notes, and he.
Right.
Just don't say it's combined.
Well, he, he, he says parcel A is to be annexed and adjoined.
Down here though, he has combined, the word combined, totals and all that.
Okay. And he should include a note that.
Yep.
It doesn't constitute a buildable lot.
Right.
Without it, as presented on the plan.
Right.
And actually, he should leave out those extension lines, the additional extension lines, Tom.
Where are you?
Where you had him, the setback lines going through, because that adds to his plan. You remember he was going to continue this?
Oh, yes.
Tell him, don't do that.
You're right. Don't show setbacks because that lot is not part of this A N R.
Tom. Right, right.
Actually, there was, that was another thing that confused me about this when it first came to me was the fact that he actually had that property drawn out, you know? Usually you just write down the name of the person who owns it. You don't necessarily draw out the lines of their property as well.
All right.
So that was just.
But you do show budding properties and budding structures and, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, you can't, but not structure, I mean, normally, not with an A N R, but.
I just think he, I, I just, I mean, he does know that it can't keep, be combined without a deed. He's got to know that. That's really basic.
I hope so.
Basic, but.
I hope so. As I said, I spoke to him, to him at least twice on the phone and Kathleen at least two, two, three times on the phone. And she's like, oh, I don't know why we need an A N R for this. And I'm like, okay. She goes, I'm just here for a clarifying line. That's what she originally said that this was about, was a clarifying line, not for anything else, so. I, as I said, I was very.
Yeah, but he's a surveyor and he'll understand.
Yeah.
Just to, to, you know, tell him the plan can't present the par, parcels as combined.
Right.
Just.
So I have four notes. We add to parcel A that it doesn't constitute a buildable lot. We don't show the setbacks on the small lot because that lot is not part of this A N R.
Mm-hmm.
We do not, uh, we show parcel A and we show the remainder parcel, which we call the green parcel.
Yes, right. And I don't think they have to be to the same scale. I agree with you.
And, and that constitutes two lots. He's taking.
He's going to do a two-page, a two-page plan.
And then there's a third one, um, remove the, the, any combination claims.
Right. Because it cannot be combined until it's deeded over, and it can't be deeded over. It's a cart before the horse problem, right?
That's right. Well, it's a difficult one. I want to say good job.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, it is.
And we don't, we don't get to participate in the day-by-day, so it's appreciated very much that you're, you're bringing these to some level of completion, that we can get these conversations going. I'm going to hold on to this because you have it electronically. In fact, I think I have it electronically.
Mm-hmm. You do.
Um, and. Now, question. Is it okay with the board that we have such a conversation with this gentleman? Um, tomorrow, outside of a posted meeting? And I can, I mean, I could have it, I, I'm, I'm the only planning board member on the phone, so it's a one-on-one conversation with a, with an applicant.
You want to vote?
Well, I, I'm, I'm asking two questions. Anybody have any real concerns with it? And then procedurally, we could do it by vote if that's what you, if that's best. Any concerns?
I don't have any concerns, but I think a vote might be in order that you.
All right, that'd be fine.
Um, contact, so I move you contact John Farnsworth, the surveyor, in the, uh, for the A N R plan presented tonight by Kathleen Derzius. For the purpose of. Clarifying the points regarding combining the lots, eliminating confusion.
Yeah.
Lots are being combined.
Well, I, I have them identified. If you just say the four points I listed.
Okay, the four, yeah, the four points we.
We discussed.
We discussed.
And, and whatever else he might raise. I mean, he might have gone home and thought about it the same way we did, so. Seconded, say it, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We'll try to do that tomorrow.
Okay.
Um. I think, um, what we should do is, uh, just send him a quick email and say, hey, if you'd like to talk to you tomorrow, please call for a.
Okay.
Appointment, and, um, tomorrow's Thursday. I think I could do it anytime in the morning.
Okay.
Nope, I can't. I have a library meeting from. Eight thirty to twelve, so if we could do it sometime between twelve and one, twelve and one thirty, are you there then?
Uh, I could do about one thirty. Uh, probably, or, I could do at twelve. That shouldn't be a problem. I'll see if he can.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I mean, we won't have an answer tonight, but we.
Right.
I'll, I'll be in the, uh, I'll be in the library tomorrow from eight thirty to twelve, working on the roof, so I'll be around. You can spot me. All right. The other thing I wanted to ask was. I, I made some statements tonight about what the planning board's span and breadth of control is regarding this roads issue, street or road issue. I think I'm on the correct ground, because I went over with the select board in their last select board meeting, and I went over with Vince Ritchie on, uh, what we did last year, just to refresh my memory. And I think I described it right, but do we have any questions on that?
What was, last year was the same sort of situation. They were paving the dirt road.
Exact same, exact same. They wanted, uh, they came in with a petition to have the road accepted. And the question was, if we accept it, what are we accepting? And so we waived the, um. Subdivision control by law road specifications.
Okay. So basically, it was that you don't need the easement to be wider than the road. In certain spots, you can waive.
Well. Yeah, there were, I think there's probably a number of things that are not going to meet those zonings. And I think.
I can send you the list. For the next meeting, I can send that list of, of where it is in the bylaw, the road, what, what, what we're waiving.
Where, yes.
Could you find last year's vote?
I could.
Is there a, are they searchable?
I can just find last year's vote.
All right, it was the street or.
I'm, I'm sure you can waive the width right of way and, and probably also the width of the paved. You have.
I would put it in the fall of two thousand. What's this?
It was winter.
Eighteen, seventeen?
It was last year, but during the winter.
Was it in the winter? Well, sometime.
What was the road?
Last fiscal year.
Street or road? Oh, was street or road? Yes.
Oh, same exact thing.
Oh.
So what's this meeting next week?
We tried to make it so it was just street or road. We didn't really anticipate.
Are we voting on something or is it?
Well, we will consider and perhaps move, perhaps vote, pay or up or down on. The only issue I know is to, um, provide a waiver or not provide a waiver on the zoning law road specifications.
So what happened to the previous vote?
Well, uh, nothing. Uh, it, it passed and, and that means that the waiver was granted. And then it went to town meeting and, and in, and I'm not, I'm not going to have a good memory on this, but I'll do my best. The, in the town meeting, the town lawyer stood up and said the proper procedure wasn't handled, not by the planning board, but by the applicant, so to speak. And it was rejected on the floor. It was put aside or tabled or not voted on, or some such motion was made that it, it never got to the people's vote. So this year, they're doing it all again. And they're up to this stage again, and they're going to intend to bring it before the annual town meeting, uh, in June.
Was the problem last year that they didn't have a layout?
I, I can't tell you the problem.
Oh.
I would have to have Ryan or someone closer to that part of it.
I do think if we're going to get anywhere next week, Mr. Sazak, I don't know how you say his name, should be here. Can we invite him to come?
Well, what would you ask him? What does it have to do with wavering or not wavering the zone, the, the, um.
I would ask him if you, without opining on whether these people are right or wrong. If, if, hypothetically, if they're right, can you work around this problem?
Well, I, I can appreciate your, your intellectual drive and the search for the truth, but it's not our job.
No, no, but not for the truth, but can you work around it, meaning would a waiver solve this problem, you know?
No, a waiver won't solve the problem. A waiver will allow them to make a road that, instead of whatever the spec says. Twenty-four feet wide, it's twenty-two feet wide. That's the kind of waiver we can grant or not grant.
Well, they show on their plan the edge of the road where it is, which is the same width of the, which, which is the same width of the road, the whole length of it. Um, and these people claim they owned the middle of the road.
Well.
But, but they certainly are subject to an easement to the edge of where the road is now. So the question is, is that a place where? I mean, I, I do have some problems with that because how could you even put a road in if you can't, you know, work on the side of it to get it in, but it's.
We're saying, we're not saying put the road in. We're saying if you put it in.
Yeah.
You don't need all these specs to be met. You can, you can do your best with what you have there. And that doesn't mean the road, because we vote that, the, the road may never happen.
Right.
Um, we, we're not saying go or stop on the road. We're saying.
It's just that if I'm going to, I don't know, I suppose if you're going to vote on that, I would just like to know what, I would just like to hear the other side of it.
Well, they're, they were going to shift the road, weren't they, at her property?
I, I can't speak for them.
See, that's what I would like to know.
Come in next week and tell us what they're going to do, but I'm not sure it matters.
Oh, I just remember, I just remember hearing that, because the clubs across the street, um, the clubhouse, I forget what it's called.
Right, there is a club.
But I just could, I could have sworn at maybe a select committee or whatever, they said that they were going to have the road jog out around her property.
Yeah, just move the.
Well, that may or may not be true. Well, that may or may not be true, but we can't speculate on that. They'll have to come and speak to that themselves, but even if they say that, so what? We're we're saying.
Well, maybe if you're.
But how do we put a waiver, how do we grant a waiver on something where we don't know where?
What it's gonna look like.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. I have that same concern. I mean, you're dealing with a mile of road.
There.
You're probably fifteen places where it's gonna need to be waived.
No, we're not gonna waive it spot. We're gonna waive it in its entirety if if we waive it. But when you say, what is the road, they will, they will make a claim as to what the road is. They've given us three sheets of paper.
Right.
These are the points that you'd be waiving next week, conditions of acceptance.
Is that page twenty-seven already?
Page twenty-seven from the, from the bylaws. That was sent.
Well, let's, let's do our homework.
Okay.
Um, because otherwise we're having the meeting, and I don't wanna have next week's meeting tonight.
No, I just wanna have the right people present was my only thinking, because it would be helpful.
Well, we're gonna waive section two, or we're going to consider waiving section two of chapter. Eighteen, Streets and Sidewalks, of the general bylaws.
Yes.
I think.
I mean, I just think it's one thing to say you grant a waiver of up to, to narrow the existing road by. Or the, you you waive it right away. What are we waiving here? That's that's what concerns me.
We need to find last year's vote.
Because you can't, if you give a wholesale waiver, then there's nothing that prevents them from narrowing it down below or, which is reasonable.
Did you?
I'm not sure this is accurate.
What?
I'm not sure this is what we waived. We waived, I believe.
It was the subdivision.
Subdivision.
The condition, oh, was it the subdivision?
Yeah, subdivision. That's not the subdivision. That's the general bylaw.
Oh, okay. I thought that, that was the general, okay, I'm sorry.
We're not gonna waive that. We're going to fulfill our.
It's this general bylaws. This is not subdivision, right? That's what you just said.
Alright, we're gonna be, well, I wanna find last year's vote. And what we're gonna do is consider or reconsider it this year to the same extent and type as we did last.
Well, actually, this this puts limits in it. This says, no private way shall be accepted.
We're getting, we're getting way ahead of ourselves.
But it says the, unless the following minimum criteria have been met.
That's not, we're getting ahead of ourselves, folks. Let's, this is on the agenda for next week. We gave all the public two weeks' notice. We. We shouldn't preempt the meeting. Let's just put this aside next week. I think.
That is what Ryan sent us, the, what we were waiving.
Well.
Okay.
Um.
Whatever it is.
No, I I wanna find last year's vote and we'll, we'll do that. I'll help you tomorrow if need be.
Okay.
Sometimes when I help, it slows it down, but. Alright, anything on the agenda we wanna return to?
Have you sent this to us? Yeah, it was in Ryan's email that he sent to everybody. I forwarded to all of you.
Okay. Alright. I'll send this back to you then.
He he may be right, but I wanna find last year's vote.
But that's what you'd be waiving.
The subdivision standards.
That's right, it's in the zoning bylaws. My my understanding is it's in the zoning, my memory says it's in the zoning bylaws, not a general bylaw.
But we have to.
But we'll, we'll look at what we did last year, Craig.
Oh, I was in there though. It was snowing. It was plowing. That's why I remembered it was in the winter.
Remember the date? We could find it on the videotape. Alright, actually, we can just skim through the agendas. Anything on the, uh?
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Alright, just give me one minute, um.
Motion to adjourn.
Planning board budget. Did did we get a planning board budget in our hands?
It's in your packet.
Alright. Does that have to be done tonight, or can we do it?
It's not really approved. It was, what happened is what we voted on, um, there were certain modifications made before it was submitted.
And it was submitted?
Well, it's been proposed by the town administrator. This is what we, what you presented.
Okay, that was posed to the select.
Yes.
You know, really, a motion to adjourn is behind the table. It is not debatable.
Oh, not debatable. You're right.
And I think, is there any way we could?
I was just having, I was just having some discussion on it.
I'm just saying, he's, can we add some of these unfinished agenda items to next week, or meeting anyway?
I don't see why we couldn't, um.
And let him adjourn. I think he really wants to go.
Yeah, he needs to get home, go to sleep. Um. No, there's no reason why we can't add anything we want to next week's agenda.
Because I'd be, I'll second his motion anyway because it's the right way to go, but whether I vote for or against it, if, see how, would it be a hardship to?
Yeah. Well. We. No, it won't. What we'll do is we'll let, um, the whole street road thing happen, and then we'll pull ourselves aside and go down some more additional topics. And those topics will be identified on a revised agenda for next week.
Is that okay? Okay, so all in favor, most would adjourn?
So, yeah. All in favor, Craig, adjourn.
Aye.
Good night, Craig. Get some sleep.
Good night, Craig.
Thank you.
And by the way, the highway is pretty good out there. It's, it's in good shape.
Well, you try, Tom.